Rob, would you knock on the door, please? Just to let them know that we're ready to start.
Record.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. This is Steve Lionel, Chair of the City of Nashua's Zoning Board of Adjustment, and this is the November 23rd, 2021 zoning board meeting. This evening's meeting will be conducted in a hybrid format. The meeting is accessible in person in the third-floor auditorium of Nashua City Hall, 229 Main Street, and via Zoom at the link posted in all public meeting agendas. Attendance via telephone is also available using the Zoom connection details. I've been informed that we're not live tonight, so you can't stream us through the city's website live, nor on Comcast Channel 16, but replays will be available later through the city's website. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting, please call 603-821-2049, and they will help you connect. In the event that the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. The Chair is in control of the meeting. To the extent practicable and advisable, the Board will follow the procedures as identified in its bylaws. The applicant will present their case, followed by questions by the Board. Next, persons wishing to speak in favor or with questions or opposition will be asked to speak. If there are questions or opposition, the applicant will have five minutes to present a response. Finally, one and only one person with questions or in opposition will be permitted to speak again before the Board deliberates and determines an outcome. All participants should endeavor to comply with the timeframes of 15 minutes maximum for the applicant and five minutes each for anyone wishing to speak in favor or in opposition or with questions. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll-call vote. Tonight, we will be hearing requests for deviation from the Nashua zoning code in the form of applications for special exceptions and variances. A special exception is a request that seeks permission to do something that the zoning ordinance permits only under special circumstances. To grant a special exception, five points of law are required to be met. These are outlined in the application, and it will be summarized in Board motions. A variance is a request that seeks permission to do something that ordinance does not permit. Variances also have five points of law to be met, different from those for special exceptions. Per the City of Nashua bylaws and State of New Hampshire revised statutes, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve any application. And that also means if we deny an application, that three votes are required. In addition, this Board will hear all scheduled cases if a quorum of three voting Board members is present at this meeting, and we do have a quorum tonight. Any citizen has the right to contest the decision that this Board makes. Should we make a decision that you believe is an error, you have the right to request a rehearing. A written rehearing request must be received by the City of Nashua Planning Department within 30 calendar days from the date of decision. Should this Board not grant a rehearing request, you can file an appeal directly to the New Hampshire Superior Court. Please contact Mr. Falk of the Planning Department for more information. So for this meeting, we have the following full Board members in attendance. We have myself, Steve Lionel, on the Chair. We have Mr. Jack Courier, who serves as our clerk. He's on Zoom. In the room here, we have Mr. J.P. Boucher and Mr. Rob Shaw. Also in the room, we have the following alternate members in attendance. We have Mr. Jay Mancara, Mr. Nick Kanakis, and on Zoom, we have Ms. Avstathia Boras. In addition to the Board members, we also have with us Mr. Carter Falk, Deputy Planning Manager, Mr. Matt Sullivan, Planning Department Director. Let us start by taking a roll-call attendance. For Board members participating by Zoom, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you, which is required under the right-to-know law, and state your reason for not attending in person. Jack Courier.
I'm Zoom. I'm present, and there's no one in the room with me.
And your reason for attending via Zoom?
Oh, I was out of town traveling this week.
Okay. J.P. Boucher.
Mr. Boucher is present.
Rob Shaw.
Present.
Jay Mancara.
Mr. Mancara is present.
Nick Kanakis.
Present.
Avstathia Boras.
I'm present. There's no one in the room, and the reason for my Zoom is actually I've been, well, I had to do a PCR test for COVID, and the results aren't back yet.
Okay. And I'm Steve Lionel, and I am present. Alternates may fully participate in discussions, but will vote only if a full Board member recuses themselves, or if there are fewer than five full Board members in attendance, which is true tonight. We have four full Board members in attendance. So for each case, I will indicate before the case starts which alternate will be voting on that case. Okay. So alternates may fully participate. Mr. Falk, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chair. The case for Land Bower Street, the owner is Robin Thappa, has been tabled to the December 14th, 2021 meeting, and will not be here tonight.
Okay, thank you. Before I start, are there any questions about the procedures that we're going to follow? Not seeing any? Okay. I will now read the first case into the record. The owner is Donna M. Buote, Living Trust, address 75 Conant Road, Sheet C, Lot 1677, requesting special exception from land use code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Item 3, to allow an accessory or in-law dwelling unit in the basement. This is the R9 Zone Ward 5. Do we have somebody in the room or on Zoom to present this case? Okay, would you please step up to the lectern, give your name and address to the record, and walk us through your application? Tell us what you'd like to do. Feel free to bend that down if it helps.
My name is Donna Buote, and I live at 75 Conant Road here in Nashua, and I would like to be allowed to have an in-law space in my basement. It was once family childcare. I was licensed, so the space is there already, and it's just doing nothing. I would like to have an in-law apartment, approval for that.
Okay. Is there anything else you want to say at this time?
There won't be any changes to the outside at all. It's just 730 square feet. There's plenty of parking, so one or two more cars.
Have you been made aware of the nine special conditions for accessory dwelling units that you must agree to?
I'm sure. I read everything, so.
Well, I'm going to sort of read through them, and you just tell me yes or no whether you agree to these, just for the record. Okay, the first one is the accessory dwelling unit shall be clearly incidental and subordinate in extent use and purpose to the primary structure and does not exceed 750 square feet.
Right, yeah.
The accessory dwelling unit shall be the only accessory dwelling unit within or on the same lot as the single-family dwelling.
Yes, I live upstairs, so.
Okay. The accessory dwelling unit shall not alter the single-family character or appearance of the single-family dwelling, or its conformity with the character of the neighborhood.
Right, yeah.
Okay, so that includes no new entrance or exit, no new curb cut, and the exterior design of the dwelling unit. Well, you're putting this in your existing basement, so you're not doing any outside work.
No, there's no changes on the outside at all.
Okay. The owner of the property must occupy either the primary or accessory. You said you were doing that.
Uh huh.
The owner of the property shall provide the City of Nashua with a covenant for filing with the Hillsborough County Registry of Deeds, along with appropriate filing fees. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but you're aware of this, and you will take care of that.
Yes, definitely.
One additional off-street parking space is required above the minimum standard for a single-family house, and you have that.
Yes.
An interior door shall be provided between the primary dwelling unit and the accessory dwelling unit.
Yes, yes.
Okay, you have that. The single-family dwelling and accessory dwelling units shall not be separated in ownership, including by condominium ownership.
Right, no, no. Yep, it's not separated. It's the same house.
And the last one is accessory dwelling units shall only be associated with single-family detached dwellings, which yours is. So, okay, so you have agreed to all nine of the special conditions. Okay, any Board members have questions for the applicant? Not seeing any in the room. The timer is covering up Ms. Boras, so I can't see. Any questions for the applicant on Zoom? No? Okay, very good. Is there anybody who wishes to speak in favor of this application, either in the room or on Zoom?
I'm in favor.
Okay, would you go bump to the lectern, give your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes.
Hi, Mr. Chair. My name is Ken Boff. I live at 17 Cambridge Road in Nashua, about two miles away from the property. Being familiar with it, having previously used Donna as a daycare provider, it makes sense for the space. I've witnessed everything. She said that it meets all the criteria. It would have no negative impact, and in fact, it makes perfect sense for use.
Okay, thanks. Any Board members have questions? No? Okay, thank you. Anybody else who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Not seeing anybody? Is there anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? And I am not seeing anyone. Okay. In that case, I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Who's voting? Hmm? Who's voting? Oh, who's voting? Very good. We're going to start with Mr. Kanakis is voting. Thank you. And you can have a seat now.
Sit down, okay.
Yes. So Mr. Kanakis will be voting on this one. So we'll start for comments. Mr. Boucher.
The application's straightforward. I support the application, viewing the property, it's exactly what the applicant said, and looking at the layout and the situation with the property, again, I don't see any issues, and so I'll fully support it as it's presented.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw.
Likewise, I'm in support. It fully meets the special exception requirements, and, yeah.
Mr. Mancara.
I also support the application for the reasons stated.
Mr. Kanakis.
I'm also in support of the application.
Mr. Courier.
I'm in support of the application for the reasons already stated.
And Ms. Boras.
I'm also in support of the application for all the reasons stated.
All right, and I'm also in support of the application. So would somebody care to make a motion? Mr. Shaw, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of the owner, Donna M. Buote, Living Trust, address is 75 Conant Road, Sheet C, Lot 1677. The request is for a special exception from land use code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 3, to allow an accessory, quote, "in-law dwelling unit in basement." This is in the R9 Zone. It is listed in the Table of Uses, as just noted. There's no indication of any negative impact for undue traffic congestion or pedestrian safety. There'll be no overloading of public water, drainage, sewer, or other municipal systems. The special regulations are fulfilled. Those are the nine criteria for ADUs, as testified to by the applicant, and it will not impair the integrity of the outdoor character with the neighborhood or be detrimental to health, morals, or welfare of residents. And as noted also by testimony, there's no changes whatsoever being done to the outside, and so there'll be no change in appearance whatsoever. For all those reasons, I move to approve this special exception.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Kanakis, thank you. Any discussion of the motion? Okay. Mr. Kanakis, how do you vote?
Vote in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
In favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Lionel, vote in favor. That's five to nothing. Congratulations. Your special exception has been approved. Please be aware, there's a 30-day window of appeal. Contact the Planning Department if you have any questions.
Thank you.
All right, move on to case number two. Cases number two and three are very similar. Owner is Global Montello Group Corporation. The address for this case is 242 Amher Street, Sheet E, Lot 92, requesting variance from land use code Section 190-108, Section C2, to exceed maximum wall sign area, 127 and a half square feet permitted, 320 square feet existing, 194.1 square feet proposed for replacement of wall signs. This is in the HB Zone Ward 1. Okay, so if somebody has come up to the lectern, please give your name and address for the record.
Thank you very much. My name is Jeffrey Christensen. I represent Global Montello Group Corp., the owner of the property at 242 Amher Street. With me is Dan Barry, the Project Manager for Global Montello Group. This is pretty much a straightforward application in connection with the signs at the property at 242 Amher Street. I can see on the screen that they're pulling up the drawings and pictures of the signs that plans and depiction should also be attached to the application. Essentially, what's going on here is the property is being revitalized, rebranded. There's going to be some interior remodeling that's unrelated to the variance, but they're redoing this store and needing to change the signs on the outside. The property has in it, there's the gas station, there's a convenience store, and there's a car wash, and it's the convenience store and the car wash signs that are relevant here. The store and the car wash both currently have signs on the property that are each about 160 square feet in size, for a total of 320. Both of these are being reduced. The store sign will be reduced to somewhere between 76.5 and 88.2 square feet. It really depends on how you measure, whether you measure it as a rectangle encompassing all the words or the separate words separately, because as you can see, there are different sizes of the font. The "all-town" is larger than the "fresh." You'll say "all-town fresh," and then there's subtext beneath it in a different size again. So depending on how you calculate that, it is between 76.5 and 88.2 square feet. The car wash sign, which is a much more cohesive sign, is being depicted right now. That is 110.6 square feet, although, again, possibly less, depending on whether or not you're counting all of that empty space. In either case, however, the property, both of those signs are going to exceed what is normally, under the zoning ordinance, permitted for this building. Section 190-108(c)(2) allows signage to be no greater than 1.5 times the building frontage, in this case, 85 feet, or for a total of 127 and a half square feet of total signage. The property is already a non-conforming use, exceeds this by a lot. As I mentioned, the current signage is 320 square feet, so this is a substantial reduction to less than 200 square feet, but it is still technically over what is required by the zoning ordinance, and therefore, we need a variance, even though it is a reduction in the non-conformity. The five elements of the variance are all addressed specifically in the written application. I'm not going to go over all of them in detail, just to save everybody time. I'm just going to hit the highlights right now. But the signs that are proposed are consistent with the present area's use. This is a commercial area with high traffic. The surrounding area has all commercial uses that all have similar signs. The proposal will both reduce the non-conformity with the zoning ordinance, bringing the property more into conformity, and it will improve the overall appearance of the property, enable the rebranding and revitalization of the property, and generally support everything that a zoning ordinance is designed to do. This will allow the store to become, the whole property in fact, including the store and the car wash, to improve the signage, update the signage to be more accurate, to be more attractive, have a more modern aesthetically appealing look. This will improve the look of the entire area. The signs are also necessary for the business. Right now, the store sign has been approved by the city, because the store sign on its own is below that minimum or the maximum requirement set by the zoning ordinance. But the car wash sign is what puts us over that limit. So without a variance, either all of the signs need to be reduced in size, which is going to have detrimental impacts on both visibility of the property and the business uses therein as traffic is going by. That decreased visibility will either result in traffic concerns as people are slowing down to try to read the sign, or simply safety concerns as people can't read the signs and are looking for these businesses. Alternatively, they could simply leave the car wash sign off, but as you can imagine, this is not a practical option either, where that would significantly impair the business on the property and thus the economic viability of the area. So these signs, as proposed, are going to improve the look of the property, reduce the non-conformity, and improve the safety and traffic in the area overall. Happy to answer any questions from the Board. Otherwise, just rest on the written application.
Thank you. And Mr. Mancara will be voting on this one. Any questions from the Board? Not seeing any questions. This is a very thorough application and very straightforward. Okay, there's nobody here in the room, and I don't see any members of the public on Zoom, so nobody is going to be offering testimony either for or against or with questions. But I'll just give enough, anybody who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition? You've given the chance. There's nobody here. Okay. So I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Kanakis, your comments?
I'm in support of this. It's reducing the current overage on the property. It's fitting with the use, and, yeah, I believe that having better visibility on a situation like this for traffic going by would be helpful for public safety, so I'm in support of the application.
Thank you. Mr. Mancara.
I'm also in support of the application. Again, as Mr. Kanakis stated, it's reducing the non-conformity that's out there now, and I think it's consistent with the character of the area. And any significant reduction in signage beyond this, I think it would be challenging for people to see, given the traffic volume, speed, width of the road, and setbacks.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw.
Likewise, I'm in support, and I don't think I have anything else to add that my colleagues haven't already stated.
Mr. Courier.
I'm in support for the reasons stated, but I'd also wanted to throw out that I appreciate what I think is a well-prepared written package, which addresses all the points of law.
Ms. Boras.
Sorry. I'm also in support for everything that's already been stated from my colleagues. I think this was put together excellent, explained and detailed. Everything would be a big improvement for the area.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher.
I support the application for the same reasons that have been stated.
And I also support the application for all of the same reasons. Would somebody care to make a motion? Mr. Boucher, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the area of variance for Global Montello Group Corp., owner of 242 Amher Street, Sheet E, Lot 92, requesting a variance from land use code, section 190-108, section C, subsection 2, to exceed maximum wall sign area, 127 and a half feet, square feet permitted, 320 square feet existing, 194.1 square feet proposed for replacement of all signs. It's in the HB Zone Ward 1. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's approach to the property. Given the special conditions of property and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than variance. Again, this is an existing property that already had existing signage. We are proving for the same reasons that it was approved originally, is again, for the safety and for motorists to be able to identify this property. Again, the signage is being reduced from the original signage, but still will achieve the same goals to alert the public of what is being offered at this property. It is within the spared intent of the ordinance. It will not adversely affect property values of surrounding parcels. It's not contrary to public interest, and substantial justice would be served. So again, I make a motion to approve the area of variance.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw, thank you for your second. Any discussion of the motion? Mr. Mancara, how do you vote?
Mr. Mancara votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Lionel, vote in favor. That's five to nothing. This variance has been approved. Don't go anywhere, because you're going to be up again.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have very much the same application, except this time it is for, I don't have to read it all. Owner is Global Montello Group Corporation, and the address this time is 43 East Hollis Street, Sheet 30, Lot 67, requesting the following variances. One, from land use code Section 190-101, Table 101-7, to exceed maximum ground sign area, 50 square feet permitted, 77.5 square feet existing, 65.9 square feet proposed, and two, from land use code Section 190-108(c)(6), to exceed maximum wall sign area, 81.5 square feet permitted, 116.1 square feet existing, 103.2 square feet proposed, for a total building redesign and company signage rebrand. This is in the D3MU Zone Ward 4. So again, give your name and address for the record, and walk us through your application as you did before.
Yes, thank you. Again, my name is Jeffrey Christensen. I'm here representing Global Montello Group Corporation. Again, with me is Daniel Barry, Project Manager for Global Montello Group. This is the property at 43 East Hollis Street. A lot of this is going to sound very familiar, but there are some differences in what's going on here as compared to the Amher Street property. So again, this property, like Amher Street, is a gas station. There's a convenience store and car wash in the building, so these three uses, and there are some signage that go along with this, that are all, again, being rebranded, revitalized, and the signs updated accordingly. Now, there are currently four signs relating to the store use, and all in total, about 105.4 square feet, and you can see the pictures of those being shown on the screen right now. The proposal reduces that number just down to one single store sign, which will be either 76.5 to 88.2 square feet, again, depending on how you calculate the actual size of that store sign, if you calculate it as one rectangle, including all of the text, or if you just take the sort of square footage of the text itself. There is also currently a car wash sign on the property that is being rebranded for the all-town car wash, and you can see that up there as well. This sign, the current one, is about 10.7 square feet. It is being enlarged to be, again, between 12.5 or 15 square feet, depending on how you measure that. So there is a slight increase in the size of that by a little bit less than five square feet at the maximum. Additionally, the pylon sign out front is being changed. That, as you can see here, it has both the gas prices and the stores, signs for the convenience store and the car wash. The total size there is being reduced from 77.5 square feet to 65.9 square feet. As with the Amher Street property, all of these are being a total reduction of the square footage of the signs on the property that are pre-existing, but because they are technically in excess of the maximum set by the zoning ordinance under typical circumstances, we do require a variance for that. In this case, the wall signs for the store and the car wash, the zoning ordinance, Section 190-108(c)(6), allows 1.25 times the frontage of the building in square footage. So in this case, with a 65-foot frontage building, you get 81.25 square feet. This will be a little bit over about 100 square feet of total signage between the all-town fresh store sign and the all-town car wash. The pylon sign is set at a maximum of 50 feet by Section 190- The pylon sign is set at a maximum of 50 feet by section 190-101-7E. That is being reduced from 77.5 square feet to 65.9 square feet, but again, still over that 50 square foot. All of this together is reducing the non-conformity on the property, but still does require a variance. There is a written application in front of you that has all five elements of the variance addressed specifically in turn. And I'm just going to touch on the highlights just to save everybody some time. The signs being proposed are consistent with the area's present use and the present use of the property. The surrounding area is a commercial area on a high-traffic road. There will not be any significant change to the character of the neighborhood because of these signs. The signs allow the property to be updated, revitalized, improves the appearance of the sign, which will benefit the neighborhood, updates the sign to be more accurate, improve their value to the general public. Additionally, reducing the non-conformity of this property, bringing it closer to what the ordinance normally requires, is also in the public interest. So this will improve the look and feel of the property itself and the surrounding area, and support the public interest by reducing the non-conformity, giving updated information to, and more accurate information to the public. Without this variance, again, the store sign has been approved, or, no, it's the, yep, the store sign has been approved by the city. The car wash sign puts it over, and the pylon sign on its own also needs to be approved. Without this variance, none of those changes can happen, which would leave the property either having to reduce all of the signage on the property, which, again, will decrease traffic safety, decrease traffic viability as people are slowing down to read signs, decrease the accessibility of the property, impairing the economic viability of the property, or just leaving off some signs entirely, which would be even worse. In the case of the pylon sign, it would be leaving it in a larger way, which is going to block visibility on the road, and reducing that is going to improve traffic as well. So this will benefit across the board with really no harm at all. Again, I'm happy to answer any other questions. Otherwise, we'll rest on the written application.
Thank you. And Ms. Boras will be voting on this case. So, comments from the board? Mr. Shaw?
This is actually more of a question for Mr. Falk, and it seems like something we might have talked about in the past, and I just don't recall, but for frontage for a property like this, since it is a corner property, does it, do we calculate based on the two frontages, or is it only calculated on the single frontage?
Mr. Shaw, we'll generally just do one frontage. Usually, the larger frontage is the one we pretty much always use. It would be unfair for them to look at, like say, if the building is of rectangle shape, rectangular shape, it would be unfair to use like the skinnier portion, because they wouldn't get much, there's no way of signage. So we usually use the larger one, but they don't get to combine them both, just the one. And in this zone, it's also a maximum of, it's only one and a quarter times, where in other zones, it's one and a half times.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more questions from the board? No? Okay. I guess we'll go with comments. Mr. Shaw, did you have anything else to add or comments?
Yeah.
Mr. Boucher?
I'm in support of the application.
Oh, you're right. Yeah, okay. I got ahead of myself. Okay. There's nobody in the room, and there's nobody else on Zoom, so it looks like there is nobody wishing to speak in favor of the application, or wishing to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application. So, okay, so we've had, and we've had questions from the board, so I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Now, Mr. Boucher, any comments?
Yes, I'll support the application, again, for many of the same reasons of the previous case, because it's similar, and it's a similar applicant. Again, reduction of signage still achieves what they need to do with the property for notification of passengers, people going by, and, you know, that notification of the property. But other than that, I'll support the application as stands.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
Similarly, both to the previous case and to what Mr. Boucher already noted, and, you know, I think the other thing that's, of course, relevant as well, is that the property has had quite a long time with the larger overage for the signage without issue, and so simply by that reduction that is being proposed here, it's a net overall benefit. I do know there was some, you know, very specific, that there is a slight overage on the car wash sign, but that in the, you know, that as a piece in itself is, I think, minor when the overall impact is still reduced. So I'm very much in support of the application.
Thank you. Mr. Mancara?
I'm also in support of the application for the reasons as stated, and I would just also note that in addition to a reduction in the overall square footage, there's also a net reduction of three signs on the building, which I think enhances the aesthetic appearance.
Thank you. Mr. Knuckles?
I'm also in support of the application.
Ms. Boras?
I'm also in support of the application for all the reasons already stated.
And Mr. Currier?
For the reasons already stated, I'm in support of the application, and I'd also like to throw in that, you know, this part of Nashua, you know, is part of the master plan to try to upgrade. We have, you know, new apartments going in, perhaps a train station, so it's also nice to see, you know, a property in this location, this property, you know, kind of doing an uptick in maintenance and making it look better. So I just wanted to throw that out there, too.
Thank you. And I'm also in support of the application. Would somebody care to make a motion? Mr. Boucher, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the area of variance for Global Montello Group Corp., owner of 43 East Hollis Street, Sheet 30, Lot 67, requesting the following variances. One, from land use code section 190-101, table 101-7, to exceed maximum ground sign area, 50 square feet permitted, 77 and 1/2 square feet existing, 65.9 square feet proposed, and two, from land use code section 190-108, section C subsection 6, to exceed maximum wall sign area, 81 and 1/2 square feet permitted, 116.1 square feet existing, 103.2 square feet proposed, for a total building redesign and company signage rebrand, sitting in D3MU Zone in Ward 4. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property given the special conditions of the property and the benefits sought by the applicant, cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. Again, as stated, that this is an existing property for quite some time with existing signage that was over the allowable limit, and that this total aggregate of signage is a reduction of the current signage that has existed for quite some time. We find that it is within the spirit and intent of the audience. We find it will not adversely affect property values and surrounding parcels. We find it's not contrary to public interest, and we find that substantial justice will be served. So again, I make a motion to approve the area of variance.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Any discussion of the motion? Now, we'll vote. Ms. Boras, how do you vote?
I'm in favor.
Mr. Currier, how do you vote?
Mr. Currier votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Lino, vote in favor. That's five to nothing. Congratulations. Your variance has been approved.
Thank you very much.
Please be aware, there's a 30-day window of appeal. We have no rehearing request. We have no agenda for the next meeting. Is that correct?
That's correct. We have an extra week in the schedule, so our next meeting isn't until December 14th, so we don't advertise till next week. So as of right now, we're putting the agenda together, and it looks like we'll have about four cases.
Okay. Yep. Including the, including the one that was deferred from yesterday. Okay. We have minutes from November 9th. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes, and are there any comments, edits, or other things to mention? Not seeing anybody. No? Okay. I have a motion to approve the minutes. Mr. Shaw, thank you.
November 9th minutes? Just saying.
Okay. And second, Mr. Boucher? So let's see. Who's going to be, Mr. Knuckles will be voting on this. Mr. Knuckles, how do you vote?
I vote in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Currier, how do you vote?
Mr. Currier votes in favor.
And I vote in favor. I'm Mr. Lino, vote in favor. That's five to nothing. The minutes from November 9th are approved. We have a draft calendar for next year, and this is the second time we've seen this. Do we, I don't remember, do we have to vote on this to approve it? How does that work?
Yeah.
Yeah, we should, yes.
Okay. Because we'll put this in the, in the meeting schedule for the entire year on the city's website, so the board should vote on it.
Okay. So are there, does anybody see any issues with the draft schedule here? Mr. Mancara will vote on this one.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2022 meeting and deadline dates proposed calendar.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Boucher, thank you. Any discussion of the motion? Mr. Mancara, how do you vote?
Mr. Mancara votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Currier, how do you vote?
Mr. Currier votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Lino, vote in favor. Five to nothing. The calendar has been approved. I will comment that it is getting to, is that time of year where we elect officers for the coming year. I don't remember if we do that before the end of the year or after the end of the year.
Generally do it in January.
In January?
Of that year.
Yeah. So, you know, people should think about, you know, if they would like to, you know, run for an office, switch to a different office. I'm happy to serve as chair again next year if people are willing, and we'll, I'll send a message out to everybody, letting them know that they should consider this, and then January will do, will do that piece of business. Okay. Motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Mr. Shaw, thank you. A second? Or, I don't know whether we even need a second. Okay, we don't have to vote on motion to adjourn. Okay. So we are adjourned at 7:13 PM.